Calling me out, calling me up like the first day. This ain't no first day. Yeah, 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 you making me new today. Pray now, straight from the fountain of wealth. I put my gift in your hand, take me from rags to riches in a bad way. Oh, you wait for me. And it seems that you wait for me. No. Took me from rags to riches, took me from rags to riches. Oh, yeah, and I love it for me. I love it, I love it, I do. Took me from rags to riches. Yeah, took me from rags to riches. Love it for me. Hey y'all, it's Nicole and I am back with another weekly vlog. If you are new to my channel, then welcome, welcome, welcome. And if you are returning, then welcome back. So today is Sunday. The week is starting off pretty good. I went to church this morning and then I came home and cooked some sweet chicken wings, some white rice and some broccoli for hubby and I. But yeah, I do have to work tonight, so I'm gonna go and get a couple hours of sleep before I have to go in. Monday, I don't have anything planned other than studying and continuing to get this content down. Tuesday, I do have class, but it's more so of a review day because I have my test coming up on Thursday this week on diabetes, obesity, hormone imbalances, anemia is in cancers. So yeah, I'm gonna be reviewing for that. And then Wednesday, I don't have anything. So again, more studying and then Thursday is the test. But other than that, that's pretty much it for this week. If you watched last week's vlog, you would know that I'm elevating my vanity space that I'm pretty much at all the time. So I did get some shelves over here for all my polishes and my favorite perfumes. And then I'm looking for a picture to put behind me. But I'm not too sure exactly what I'm looking for, but I know I want to put something there. And then y'all also know that I tried that little viral whiteboard hack, but it just did not work for me. It didn't work for me. So I ended up going with a bigger whiteboard and putting it on like a flat surface. And I love it. It's, it's amazing. I actually used it for a thumbnail for my last week's vlog. So yeah, I, I love it. It's huge. It's great for active recall and just rewriting things a million times, which I know I gotta do. So yeah, I'm really excited about that. And then I also got a package and for my feather wall that I want to do on the top of my vanity. I'll show y'all what it looks like afterwards. I'm really excited about it. I hope it comes out how I expect. But yeah, that's pretty much it for this week's vlog. Thank y'all for tuning in and I'll see y'all later. Hey y'all, so it's like 7:50. I got canceled again tonight. So I didn't have to go to work. I'm not mad, but it is crazy to me how I'm the one that keeps getting canceled. But yeah, um, I got canceled tonight, so I'm not at work. As you can see, I got a little bit of rest, so I am energized. My parents are actually out of town for like the next three weeks for their anniversary. I love them so much. I love y'all so, 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 so much. Um, and happy anniversary. It's actually tomorrow, so I'm super excited for them. I can't even call it something happy anniversary because they're literally all the way across crunchy. But I love that for them. Um, anyway, I'm about to go over there and cook for my sisters. And yeah, I do want to look for a picture to go behind me in my vanity space, but um, I don't know, let's see if I make it there or not. Cause I know they close a little late, but I just wanna make sure I cook enough food for them. So yeah, I just wanted to come in and let y'all know that and I'll talk to y'all later. Y'all, oh my God, I just found the perfect picture.
Yes, she did.
I saw it. They found out all this stuff and I ain't found nothing. Shopping together. Hey y'all, so today is Monday. It's about 6:30 and as y'all can see, I've just been studying all day. Um, I did take a break to cook a little bit. My sisters are coming over. We're gonna do like a little bonfire. Um, and I just cooked some chili and some cornbread. And my hubby baked some cookies. So yeah, um, I'm gonna finish up the cornbread before they come over and just do some more studying. That's all that's going on for today, y'all. I'll see y'all later. Hey y'all, so today is Tuesday. As y'all can see, I am currently at the post office. I'm so happy that the line is not like that, that long. And people was actually leaving out the line because they didn't have time to wait. So um, yeah, it's about 3:30 and I think I'm next. Hubby just went and got some food because I'm, we got started. I had a doctor's appointment earlier today, um, just to go over my blood work and stuff. Now I'm here. I wanted to go to school early so that I can go over some information and study and get like a little room to practice, but we ain't gonna have time for that, I don't think. Wanted to come in and check in with y'all. And yeah, I'll talk to y'all later.
Just need the application, your proof of citizenship and.
Okay, I'm just gonna hand you all the bags.
I got you, I guess. Look like you got everything you get. So you're doing it expedite.
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the application is true and complete to the best of your knowledge and belief and that the photo is current and genuine?
Yes.
So here you're gonna sign, lefty.
All three of us.
Yeah. Here is how you track the status of your application. Travel dot state dot gov, track my application status.
Okay.
You guys have a good one.
Thanks, you too. Application is complete. It didn't even take 10 minutes. Like I had everything already ready to go. We had to get some food, cuz baby. Hungry, wanting to work. This man is eating his salad with a knife, y'all.
No, they're dehydrated, okay? Um, and I'll double my insulin dose. No, don't ever do that on your own, okay? Which of the following assessment findings does the nurse expect to find in a client with hypothyroidism? Weight gain? Cold intolerance?
Yes.
Tachycardia?
No.
Fatigue?
Yes.
Diarrhea?
No.
No, they get no one. Better get anticoagulants. Okay, cuz we've said it so many times, right? Asphyxia and abdominal distension. Do we expect those? Yes. Confusion and hand flapping tremor?
No.
Don't like that. Do I think they're gonna have jaundice dysglauzoid?
Yes.
Do I like any of these?
No.
This is where we go to expected and unexpected, okay? And then is it normal, abnormal? Is it expected or unexpected? All right? Confusion can happen, but it's not, we shouldn't expect it. Why are they confused when they have cirrhosis?
I'm more immunogenic.
High ammonia levels, okay? What do I give my patient with high ammonia levels to lower them? Lactulose. How do I know it worked?
What are we giving them? I'm sorry.
If he says I'm gonna increase my salt, is that good?
No.
That's probably not good anyways. You could always eliminate that one, right? Okay, I should eat a high protein diet, even when confused. I need to limit my sodium intake? That one sounds good. I can drink small amounts of alcohol.
No.
You have cirrhosis. Nurse recognizes which clinical manifestations as a sign of cirrhosis? Do they get jaundice?
Yes.
Do they get tachypnea? Yes. Why do they get tachypnea? What's on liver? They can bleed. Spider angiomas? Yes. Weight gain due fluid retention?
Yes.
Brady cardia?
No.
Never mention that. Don't on the test figure out something we didn't talk about, okay? I am not trying to trick you by put that on there and say, oh, you didn't need that. I don't do that, okay? If we didn't talk about it, don't. Okay? Another thing is when you're taking the test, okay, I cannot answer. I got my steps in on the second test. But do not convince yourself that you're wrong. You're calling me over, you're showing me the right answer. And you're like, but what if it's this? No. Just answer it because you probably knew it. That's why you went for it, right? Don't convince yourself that you're wrong, right? Cause then you start to tell yourself stories in your head. And then you remember Aunt Gladys who had this and all of this other thing. Do nursing interventions are appropriate for managing a client with asphyxia? Do we monitor birth daily?
Yes.
Because we can't by looking at patients say, oh, it looks like you're better or it looks like you got worse. The only way we know is by measuring birth. Restrict sodium intake? Yes, cuz they have too much fluid on board. Encourage high fluids?
Nope.
Administer diuretics as prescribed?
Yes.
Placement setting towers?
Yes.
Okay, it's gonna make it difficult to breathe to general emergency.
Okay.
I can go hiking in high altitudes if I pace myself?
No.
Why is that no?
Elevated is not good.
Cause that's gonna lower their elevation, okay? How do you measure treatment effectiveness for both?
Their levels.
Their levels, okay?
Hey y'all, so I just got out of class. And I luckily got a headache, but it's okay. We're gonna push our weight to the gym. Get back home and do some more studying. I feel okay about the information though. I feel okay. About a hundred percent, but we're gonna, we're gonna try to get there at least 98 and 99. But yeah, just checking in. I'll talk to y'all later. Hey y'all, so just getting back home. After we left the gym, I ended up running a couple of errands and it's already four o'clock. Today is my father-in-law's birthday. So we're actually gonna take him to dinner. So I'm really excited about that. Picked up a cake and everything and those reservations are set for 6:00 PM. So um, it's basically already time to get ready. I'm about to clean up the house just a little bit and then get ready. So I wanted to come in and check in with y'all before I did all of that. And I will see y'all later. We are headed to the place that we're gonna have dinner. Um, they don't know, but we're just going to see this 52. It's just like a little nice restaurant that has great and healthy food. So that's where we're headed. Um, got the cake. Of course we're running late because of me, but you know. I be trying, I really be trying to be on time. I be trying to be on time, but it just don't be working out. But yeah, um, I'll talk to y'all later. Somebody says somebody got a heat int- I guess, did you know that they have heat intolerance for hypothyroidism?
Yes, I do.
I didn't know that, but it makes sense.
You wanna know why she said?
It wasn't your body to produce more heat than it can dissipate.
Dissipate.
We all be in words wrong today. But you're generating heat while you're burning fuel fast. But I wish I burned fuel fast once. Cause Lord have mercy, I need to lose weight. Cause that cake got me thinking, I'm stopping on my way. Oh, but I can't.
We got some cookies.
No, stop it. I'll probably be a diabetic, but I didn't do this course, but.
Okay y'all, so it is now 1:02 in the morning and we are finally done studying. I feel pretty good about the information for tomorrow. Um, yeah, I'm not really gonna go through my flashcards cuz it's just a lot of information. And I realized that I actually make my flashcards based off everything she's ever said about the content in class. It just, it's just a lot of information. So I think tomorrow, I'm just gonna go through some case studies and a couple of practice questions. And I'm gonna call it a day, it is what it is. Um, yeah, I just wanted to check in with y'all, but I'm tired. I'm going to bed and I'll see y'all in the morning. Okay, hey y'all, so it's about 2:45 and I'm just getting back home from the gym. And um, pretty natives. So I got JB bowl. It has a combination of acai, a little bit of Greek yogurt, um, pineapple, strawberry, peanut butter. Um, it normally comes with, oh, and it also has hemp seeds. And then it also comes with coconut shavings, but I sell that for honey because I don't usually like coconut. Like I don't like coconut for real. So yeah, and then I know I have my chai latte. So let's try. I haven't had an acai bowl in so long. Really good. And so I'm gonna shower and I'll come back to y'all when I'm headed to school. Or at school at some point. Hey y'all, so it's like five minutes till class and just made it to school. About to go in and take this exam. Say my prayers, about to say him again. I'll talk to y'all after the exam is done. Okay, it's about an hour later. I just finished my test. I think I did okay. I know there were some questions I got wrong, but of course. But yeah, I'll come back later once I get the results. Hopefully she puts them out today. Usually y'all, I'm in a slow, I'm trying to shop and relieve these nerves, but this teacher ain't dropped his grades yet. She did not drop the grades yet and my nerves bad. My husband nerves is bad, surprisingly, but I don't know. I'm gonna try to get the result for y'all. They locked?
Yes.
Oh dang. But these grades need to come out, cuz my nerves are getting bad. All right, y'all, so it's like 8:46. She posted grades like 10 minutes ago, but I wanted to wait until like I home to look over the results with y'all. Um, I'm a little anxious, but we, we finna, we finna see, fingers crossed. What does it say?
16.2, baby. 16. It's a 90, baby.
I hate nursing school.
I know, I know, I know.
See, if I would've just thought a little bit, thank you, Jesus.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I got it, I got it 85, so.
I got a 90. But see, that's not an A because in nursing school, an A is not an A apparently. Uh, A is a 91. I'm point two short of an A, but I'm really happy with my grade because I really didn't know about, I didn't know about this one. Yeah, that's what I got. The test is, yeah. But this test has so many different topics on it, like y'all, we were studying hard. It was thyroid, hyper, hypothyroid, hyperparathyroid, hypoparathyroid, cancer, anemia's, all the different types of anemia's, all the different types of cancers.
Obesity.
Obesity, diabetes type one type, like it was, it was everything. And the test was, it was hard. It wasn't like straightforward and it was, it was, it was difficult, but we persevered. We're gonna celebrate. We start clinicals this weekend.
Celebrate tomorrow.
We gonna celebrate tomorrow? I gotta call my friend y'all.
Hello.
Girl. This test was hard. Don't get mad at me, but I'm kinda mad. Like we studied for As, bro. Like we studied, we studied for As, like we studied for As. For all the questions that we, the practice questions that we did, cuz those were good questions. We had good conversation over those questions. I don't know, we passed. It's just a lot of, I'm much more studying. I might as well have moved into your house. I don't know. Literally. All right, y'all, so that's it for tonight. I'm, I'm calling tonight, you know, I'm, I'm probably gonna do my nails, do my hair or something. Shopping didn't really help. But yeah, okay, I'll talk to y'all tomorrow. Hey y'all, so today is Saturday. It's about 5:00 AM and I'm getting ready to head out for my first day at clinical. I am actually super excited cuz I'm in a hospital. They really let you get your experience ass, so I'm really excited. So yeah, let's go. Hey y'all, so just got the clinical. I have no idea where I'm going, but excited. I didn't even know that was on my head. I saved the money. Hey y'all, when I tell y'all, I have been fighting tooth and freaking nail to get y'all this video. It's like a couple of weeks later. I had so many issues trying to get this vlog out. My iCloud storage is full. I couldn't get the footage onto my computer to edit. It was just all over the place, but obviously we gotta figure it out. Not only did I wanna come on here and properly close out the vlog, I also wanted to tell y'all about that clinical day. Clinicals was very much an experience. It was, it was very much an experience. Like got the clinical, met my clinical instructor and he passed around a paper with our names on it. Sort of like an attendance sheet that we had to sign off on and then next year name. I noticed there was like some initials, but didn't really put together what exactly it meant because the last two semesters consist of med search one and med search two. And so I just assumed we're gonna be on a med search unit. But I noticed next to my name said the ED and I soon learned that that was the emergency department. And I was like, oh my God, first day, okay, here we go. I was caught completely off guard, but for you nursing students that are assigned to the emergency department, just know that if there is a code blue or a rapid response that then turns into a code blue, you are first up on compression. So make sure you have your CPR down because you're gonna be getting lots of practice. You're gonna be thrown right in. But knowing that information, I kinda was trying to prepare myself, but I really wasn't prepared cuz I was kinda caught off guard. Cuz I had no idea that I was gonna be in the emergency department. But by like 10, 11 o'clock that day, the ER was just, it was, it was popping. We had three traumas. I can't really give y'all all the details, but all I am gonna say is that we did lose some patients and we also saved some patients. So we had a guy come in, came in with a pulse, he wasn't coding or anything, but then it did escalate to a code blue. So there was two people that went before me. And the way it works is one person will do compressions for two minutes. They'll be pushing epi, doing all the necessary procedures and things to stabilize the patient. But after two minutes of compressions, they will then do a pulse check. But during that time, in case there is no pulse, there should be another person up on the stand. So then resume compressions. So there was two people that went before me and then once the second person stepped down, I stepped up. In my mind, I'm like, please, 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 please go back. Please don't let me have to do this. But after two minutes of compressions, epi and all the extraordinary measures they were taking to save this patient, he still had no pulse. So then the doctor told me to resume compressions. So I go. And in that moment, I honestly was thinking about nothing, but like you gotta save this life, gotta save this life. And I ain't gonna lie, at first, because it was my first time, I was sucking at first. Like I was literally sucking at first and I kept hearing the AD or the machine kinda beeping at me. And I'm like, I hope that doesn't mean, you know, I'm sucking. But it was, and it was crazy because in the moment, it wasn't funny, but looking back at it, it was kinda funny. But somebody screamed out, was like, somebody help her out, please? And I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm sucking. So then somebody comes behind me and they're just screaming at me, deeper, deeper, harder, harder. So I'm like, and when I tell you those two minutes were the longest two minutes ever. Like it literally felt like the longest two minutes. But I didn't wanna focus on the clock. I'm like, just save the patient, just save the patient. And finally somebody screams out, 30 more seconds, keep going. Then they told me to stop compressions, they did a pulse check. Y'all, they said we have a pulse. His pulse came back and then I stepped down out of breath, instantly sweating, like it was a movie. And then I can just hear them screaming out, it's getting stronger, all right? Patient stabilized. So happy. So that was definitely the highlight of my day. I was really ecstatic and really grateful that I was able to get the opportunity to not only do compressions on a real person, because y'all, it is different than a mannequin. It is very different than a mannequin. But not only did I get a chance to do that, I was able to get his pulse back. So that was just really, really, really rewarding. Um, because I don't think I, I definitely didn't tell y'all this, but I wanna say about a year, almost two years ago, probably longer than that, I was literally casually just driving, headed to the mall to do some shopping. You know, self-care day, self-shopping day, all of that, right? And I ended up witnessing a very bad car accident. Mind you, I have no medical background. I had no idea how to do CPR. I had no idea how to do any of that stuff, right? This car accident was so bad that it literally stopped the entire interstate. And I, by the grace of God, was the only car that was not in this accident. So it literally stopped traffic that I was literally able to park and stop on one side of the interstate and cross the interstate to, you know, try to help or whatever. Long story short, I called 911, of course, and they had me going over there to check pulses, to give them more information on the accident. It was, it was just literally, they ended up walking me through how to do CPR on the phone. And let's just say he, he didn't make it. Granted, now having the experience and the knowledge that I do have, you know, he most likely wouldn't have made it if I didn't know how to do CPR in a sense. But just not knowing what to do in that situation to now, years later, being a nursing student, being in a trauma and knowing what to do and being hands-on and everything. It was, it just was very rewarding for me. And it was just God's way of turning my past traumas and experiences of not being able to save someone and just feeling like.